Good evening, welcome to the May 17th, 2017, meeting of the Gatesboro Planning Commission. First up is the approval of our minutes from May 3rd. Now, let me do a quick check here. So Lloyd, you were out.
I was on.
Rosalie, you were out. So we've got, we have three of three. Okay. So is there a motion, please? Either Danny or Phil.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes from the May 3rd, 2017 minute meeting.
Second.
It's moved in second. In all, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And two abstained. Okay, 302. Thank you very much. And for the record, alternate Commissioner Phil Russell is joining us in the dais and participating this evening as not all commissioners are present. That takes us to our record plot agenda, and I guess there's none tonight? Is that right?
There's nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight? Okay. We have on the agenda a consent item, and I wanted to recommend to the commission that we defer that based on some questions and information I was trying to get from staff today. Is there any, any problems with that?
No.
Is there a motion, please, for deferral?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we defer the consent item AFP 7563-2017 to the future.
Second.
It's moved in second. In all, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that passes unanimously. All right. That would then, that takes us to the recommendation to Mayor and Council for an item tonight, which is sketch plans 7503-2017 for Kentland Square, 209 through 227 Kentlands Boulevard in the MXD Zone. And presenting from staff is Rob Robinson. Good evening, Rob.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hang on just a quick second.
Before that begins, I will be recusing myself from this application, so I will be stepping down.
Okay. Thank you, Rosalie.
Be coming back.
Yes, as you mentioned, this is the recommendation for the Kentland Square sketch plan. I've put together a presentation tonight because there's a sizable amount of information that was going through to do this recommendation. The first slide is, obviously, the location is at approximately 12-acre site. If you know the area, it is essentially the two surface lots in front of the current Kmart and some of the associated buildings next to right off Great Seneca Highway. As with sketch plans, one of the findings, you know, is discussing the staff analysis is that it has to be based upon the master plan, and this one is based upon the Kentlands Commercial District Land Use Master Plan. It was adopted in May 5th, 2008, and the area highlighted in white is the subject area of the master plan. One of the things to keep in mind is, once again, master plans are, you know, set up the framework, they're not scripture, but they have overriding visions and recommendations that because of the MXD, you have to be pretty much in conformance with, but not strict compliance with. There's a subtle nuance there. There were four basic planned visions and goals from the master plan. One was land use and intensity, and we'll just go with the highlights, you know, growth for the Kentlands downtown with a healthy mix of uses, increased intensity in downtown Kentlands as market demand grows. Part of this master plan, for those who may remember, was a recommendation to relocate the corridor city's transit way to the Kentland side. One of the things that people need to be aware of, at the point in time this master plan was adopted, the actual CCT station was basically located Orchard Ridge Drive on the Metamune side. So subsequent to the adoption of this master plan, over time, the state did move it over to Kentlands. So, that is important because in the master plan where they showed the recommended station is not actually where the station ended up. Public spaces and streetscapes, you know, civic spaces, such as the green area that we'll talk about, creating actual drive aisles in the current parking lots, improving pedestrian crossings throughout, and then the forming character gradually replacing the shopping centers with a more urban model. So these are the main visions and goals of the master plan to keep in mind as we review this sketch plan. The sketch plan actually, with their recommendations, broke up the commercial district into numerous blocks as shown on the screen now. As it relates to that plan, the sketch plan covers basically six blocks. So Block 1 is sort of equivalent to Blocks A1 and A2, Block 2 to Block A2, Block 3 to A2 and E. Block 3, be aware, is now the 30% design planned Kentlands, I mean, CCT station along Great Seneca Highway. Block 4 is Block E, and Block 5 and 6 are Block D as it relates to the master plan. So here's the sketch plan that everybody has seen. Again, you know, the master plan in this area called for it to be six blocks, there's essentially six blocks here. The master plan had called for a centralized green in this area. You can see the G-green, you know, is there also. Going through the main plan elements, again, it's approximately 12 acres. It could include up to 1,450 multifamily dwelling units. It may include, you know, almost 800,000 square feet of non-residential uses. The uses as listed here, you know, are office, restaurant, retail. I bolded childcare because that's been added since the public hearing at the request of staff because obviously we're seeing that as a growing need, and if you're bringing in more housing, the use of childcare is something that could be important. Another thing I'd like to note, a difference from the master plan. The master plan being done, basically approved in 2008, was before the economic downturn and the world was very different. So basically, all the commercial uses discussed in the master plan context strictly dealt with retail. We know that's not necessarily realistic anymore. And since, obviously, the adoption, we've, you know, adopted text amendments such as integrated light manufacturing and activity centers. So we wanted to expand the uses beyond just calling for, you know, hundreds of thousands of square feet of retail. And I want everybody to remember that for this, this is just the first phase in a multi-phase project that deals with a number of property owners to actually implement this master plan.
So Rob, on that issue of uses, forsake of argument, over the next 10 years, if the city decides to update ordinances and create text amendments that acknowledge other forms of whatever uses, would this have to be, would the sketch plan ultimately have to be amended if those uses wanted to come in?
Potentially, but that's why we worked very hard with the applicant, as you can see here, to do a comprehensive list. It would be very difficult for me to imagine a use that would come in that we already would go, "This would be perfect for there, that doesn't fall under one of these categories."
Fair enough. I think what I'm just leading up to is that the tenor of this would be not to discourage something that might be an emerging industry 10 years from now that makes sense, for a lack of having it actually stated in this.
And Chair, we, we're basically dealing with integrated light manufacturing. If this wants to come in one of our MXD Zone properties now, they're going to have to amend their plans to introduce it. It wasn't something that was done by right.
Okay.
So, I put together this slide, and this basically sort of gives you a compare and contrast of the master plan to their plan. So A1 is equivalent to Block 1. You know, the master plan called for four to five stories with ground floor uses, retail preferred. I know it's somewhat difficult to see on this, but the plan is in the record. Block 1 calls for six stories, multifamily, 250,000 square feet of commercial, meaning those other things and office. D, 5 and 6, you know, that is, again, two to four stories, 5 and 6. This is basically one story to five stories, so it's basically there. The intent is the same as was envisioned, Block 5 for that section. Block 4 is done to, you know, Block E in the master plan. And one thing to be aware of, where I'm hovering now, 3, this was the original, under the master plan, where the CCT station was envisioned to go. The actual, now, 30% design plans, the station is basically here at the terminus of this road. This is important because one of the recommendations in the master plan was that Main Street be the main retail frontage street. You will see that's changed, but that's in response to the realities that have occurred since the master plan. But regardless, with this block, the master plan called for eight to 12 stories, they are recommending up to 12 stories for, you know, 1 and 2, eight to 12. They have 12 on this block, but they actually stepped it down because it's more context-sensitive to the colonnade. So you can see, this is where I'm saying, this is pretty much in conformance with the master plan, but it recognizes realities, and that's why the master plans essentially, again, are a guide. It's not ordinance. So the public hearing was held April 3rd. So the applicant had presented the whole plan in its entirety, and there were four main takeaways to come from there. The first one being, they, from the dais and particularly the commission, they wanted an understanding of the densities and how the pedestrian scale vision relates to some of the stuff that was discussed in the master plan. How this redevelopment relates to the greater surrounding context was a bit of discussion. The connectivity network both within and to the subject area, and a discussion of the open green space. So in response, as you can find in your packets, the applicant not only put together a response letter in narrative form discussing stuff, but provided a collection of exhibits to answer these questions. So I'd like to go through these. So the density is shown on the plan. Basically, sketch plans, once again, establish an up-to range of possible residential and commercial development. So what that really means is if you see something that says 250,000 square feet of commercial and up to, and 400 units, that doesn't mean you're going to get both. You may get one, you may get the other, or you may get some combination thereof. About the only thing that the applicant really has, you know, sort of expressed going through is the pedestrian scaled environment on the ground floor, which is a main emphasis of the master plan. So, for those that had brought up, well, how can you fit that? I mean, realistically, physically, some of these, you know, if you did both numbers, you can't get those on the blocks that were shown, especially in the heights given. So again, the frontages that will incorporate ground floor commercial uses and promote pedestrian scaled activity, the applicant actually did this exhibit. This is the frontage exhibit, and this actually updates a similar exhibit that's shown in the master plan. And the reason I brought up earlier was, again, with the master plan, they showed the frontage going along Main Street. But as we discussed, that was based upon the design theory that it was going to terminate at the CCT station. With the CCT station now here, the applicant has obviously shifted some of that frontage. Please note also, you know, they've gone the extra effort to talk about, you know, what's existing out there, because as we've discussed, sketch plans can take years, if not decades, to fully implement. So, you know, part of the discussion was, this is still going to remain a viable retail center, and it is currently an activity center. So it's also identifying those, those frontages on the existing buildings. So to the greater context, the applicant, again, provided an exhibit, and this one really broke out. So I think the important things to take away from this, when you look at the master plan area, what's surrounding it, it's predominantly single-family housing neighborhoods. It has NIST, Metamune, the First Field Corridor, which, you know, we just had a discussion about. Watkins Mill Town Center is, you know, only a little over two miles away with the Mark Station and the Watkins Mill essentially business parks, that new biotech hub. Crown is a little over two miles away, Washingtonian's about two and a half miles away. So for the greater context, it proposes multifamily dwelling units in an area dominated by single-family housing. It provides amenities and the complementary uses for these adjacent employment nodes. So again, while you have these hard campuses and traditional office parks, here's going to be a place that through linkages via bicycle, pedestrian, mass transit, or single occupancy vehicle is going to provide the restaurants, it's going to provide housing, it's going to have a civic green with programming, it's going to provide all these things. We've used the phrase, you've heard, rising tide lifts all boats. By improving this, it makes the surrounding regional context stuff even more valuable because of the proximity to what could be coming in here. As I said in the last bullet here, improved infrastructure will promote greater connectivity and the proposed housing will address future growth scenarios. We all understand this, this city, this county is, are not going to shrink in the future, so we're going to have to address housing. The street hierarchy, this was another one that was discussed, and one of the fail, well, not failings, one of the things that is lacking in the master plan is, they had a street hierarchy exhibit too, and they discussed A Streets, B Streets, and C Streets, but they never defined them. So it's always been sort of out there going, "Well, what exactly do you mean?" And again, with this being a sketch plan, we're not at the stage now, we're not asking for cross-sections. I mean, we understand the theories, but this is more a functional qualitative diagram of what's going on. One thing that I do want to note is, on this exhibit, you'll see dash here, and this is to provide the flexibility to respond to whatever happens with Kentland's apartments. At the time of the writing of this, in this evening, they haven't even gone to work session, it's still an active application. So while originally you may think, you know, as we go to the next slide, this may be a C Street, depending upon what happens on that property, it may be more appropriate to create it to a B Street. So the applicant has come through and sort of defined what these are, and from staff's opinion, these do make sense. A Streets being your main ones, you know, these are really what we talked about, you know, really drive those. It's really the main ingress egress points into the 12 acres. Spatial closures, you know, it's going to facilitate everyone, two-way traffic. You're really not going to do your loading off there, you know, you're not going to have that stuff. So going back one slide, again, what we're talking, oh, that went a little crazy. So again, so what we're looking at, as we sort of talked about, an A Street would be one, again, that terminates with the terminating visit of the CCT station, Market Street, and this is the Main Street. So Main Street, they're not, you know, where the master plan called for it to be an A Street all the way over, what's sort of being talked about is that the A Street qualitative functional nature sort of ends at Market, because then in here, it's just the ingress egress out to Samlike Highway. So as was discussed in the previous slide, you're not going to have the activity of the frontage there. So you've basically created, you know, this network, and they've included in, you know, other ones thinking, you know, longer term how this could develop and not just limit themselves to the 12. So this is Booth, of course, and then going across. The Bs, again, you know, it's local serving, it has everyday uses, but it still can have pedestrian activity. It has that scaled stuff. It's not just, you know, essentially a five-foot sidewalk with a potential to load. So again, looking, these are the interior ones. So as was talked about during the public hearing, you know, as this develops with this building, odds are the entrance to the, the integrated structured parking, well, you know, we're just hypothesizing here, I don't want to be held to that, but what would make sense is, it would be loaded off this street. But it's still a street that now goes to the Giants, so it's still an important street. And going all the way through, you know, it proposes the connections potentially to going to the colonnade. So it's the hierarchical nature. Again, the C is basically what you know now as that loading alley that goes behind everything. And as what they discuss is, again, these sort of link the two, and this is, you know, more of your low intensity, there is not so much of pedestrian activity, but your loading areas, it's your entrances into the parking garages, et cetera. So the hierarchy from ours, from staff standpoint, as discussed in the staff analysis, you know, it's well thought, it makes sense, it's clarified some of the questions remaining from the master plan, and it reflects the nature of the property today, and not necessarily the nature of the property in 2008. So I mean, some of the tweaks have been there, and it's a proper response. They also contributed pedestrian and bicycle access exhibits. I've combined the two because essentially, they show the same thing. I mean, this is all in lockstep with the city of the goal going forward, any roadway network facilitates multiple modes. So it just overlaps. To what extent? That's to be done at SDP. I mean, we have a number of things we have to do, including this fiscal year, as we've mentioned, we're going to be redoing our road code. So, you know, we're working with the county on their bicycle master plan, there's a lot of stuff to go into this. But, but this is comforting in the knowledge that, you know, any roadway on here is not going to just be a roadway. It's going to be able to facilitate the other connections. A question, and this is just an example, they provided three slides, and we were very impressed by their diligence with this. One of the questions that was raised at the, during the public hearing was, "Well, how do people get to this, especially if this is the first phase that builds?" So the applicant submitted three exhibits that are real world, and what they did was they essentially took Market, Exchange, and Main and walked those today and numbered areas, and then did the corresponding photographs to show what the actual passage is and how comfortable it is. There was some, there were some comments, you know, "Oh, you're walking through parking lots." What was shown on these three does not show that. You may cross an entrance into a parking lot, but many of these are tree shaded, there's green panels, there's at least a four-foot sidewalk, in some cases, a five-foot sidewalk. Some of the dash stuff, obviously, are more that would be in. But again, from our standpoint, you know, this gives us comfort that in the interim, not only in the long term will these connections be improved, but in the interim, there will be safe, you know, access and accommodating access to when should this ever get redeveloped along with the other ones that are still behind. So the open green space exhibit, one of the comments raised during the public hearing was the amount of green space, and this is a large discussion. And, you know, the applicant was good enough to put together this exhibit, and as we've had the discussion with the planning commission, and as I sort of alluded to in the staff analysis, functional, creating a place functional green space doesn't mean more lawn. You know, sometimes that doesn't work. There's a bunch of other things. If the goal for this area is really to be a node of transit-oriented development in a more urban, you know, field, as I mentioned in the staff analysis, ball fields aren't appropriate for here, but there's a lot of other tools, and I think that's, when you look at a bubble plan, gets lost, because people look at this little blurb of green and go, "That's it? That's all?" But that's really not it, and that's what the photos are showing. What you don't see at this stage and will come in is, coupling it with the frontage exhibits, you know, wide pedestrian walks, they create places. You're creating the interaction and the synergy. One of the things, you know, we've discussed, and Lord knows, with my environmental planner hat on, you know, I love more green stuff, but it's got to be useful, but, and sometimes we've seen in some communities, pocket parks don't serve any purpose, it's just they're there, and nobody uses them, and they're, they're just maintenance responsibilities. So you can say, "Wow, there's green," but it's really not being used. So, as I said here, activated open spaces do not always correlate to large expanses of lawn. Design tools including energizing uses, cafes, everything else, not just standard retail, hardscaping elements, wide activated walks, placemaking elements such as public art, and a focal gathering area combined to create the synergy needed to become a desired place. Extra lawn in and of itself may not create that place. And I think we have to be aware, once again, we're looking at the first phase, we're looking at the first 12 acres of 35 acres. There's nothing to say going forward from a business model design standard or whatever that we may not have some of these other parks. And we have the whole other side of Kentlands Boulevard coming in also at a certain point with sketch. So I worry at points during the public hearing that people thought, "This is all we're ever going to see." So I think we have to temper some of that balance, and I think a perfect example, while it may be sort of apples to apples, is Crown. I mean, that is, you know, a half acre, that's central green, but it's what goes on around that central green that makes it seem bigger. And as they continue to improve upon the programming and everything, that is truly a gathering place as opposed to having, you know, a football field. So staff recommendation, staff recommends that the planning commission, upon the evidence in the record and the findings required under 24160-D10 and presented in the staff analysis, recommend approval of SK-7503-2017 to the mayor and council. And that's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. As you can see, the entire applicant's team are here. Should you have any questions, you know, for clarification purposes?
Anybody? Jump in.
Just a, just a quick, you talked about A and B, can you talk a little bit about C Street?
Sure. On the screen now, as it was discussed, these streets enable A and B streets to be more pedestrian-focused. They do have two-way traffic, but these basically are envisioned to facilitate building secondary entrances, parking service, and loading access. So Commissioner Wenberg, when you look at it, really where they're talking about is the existing service alley now that goes, you know, from Booth and basically runs across the Upton site. So, so again, the ability with some of the construction, you're really not going to, you're, you would already have the back of the colonnade to you. These are already the service areas for the existing, you know, grocers and things like that. So, yeah, if you know, I could understand possibly the concern, but you can see that they're not being sighted anywhere in the main crux.
But they, but they all have the same speed limit?
Well, they're proposing that right now. Again, these, you know, I think what they're sort of saying is, any of these roads going through these areas would probably be at a design speed of 20 miles an hour. You're not going to do overly expansive.
No more than that, right.
We are way too early to be establishing speed limits, but I think we can talk about, from a functional qualitative standpoint, what sort of design speed makes sense.
Okay.
When we talk about 12-story buildings, are we also including the 12 stories, let's say, three or four stories of parking as well? Is that all strictly residential or?
I think, and it was sort of discussed, I think what's envisioned, the reality is, because of the design nature, and again, this is, you know, everybody wants to talk about SDP stuff now, but I think what we can probably expect is probably something similar to what we've seen at Crown, either with the Zudo product or the other one where it's internal garage, it's actually going to have units wrapping, so you'd have the entrance into the garage, but you're not going to see large exposed garages. So, to your answer, yeah, the garage will be part of that 12 stories, but it's not going to be gobbling up floor area. And again, the 12 is the 12. We can't assure that, remember, Crown's sketch plan said 20 stories. At the end of the day, when it came in, it was seven, so.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Just a couple of comments, and they might turn into questions. First of all, I really do like the sketch plan as it stands, as a catalyst to start moving redevelopment forward. So I, as a blanket kind of endorsement of where this is headed, I'm really happy to see how this is coming together, and then it's coming together, so, you know, after a lot of years of wondering what will happen with them, with that center. So two, two or three specific kind of design issues that are implied even at the sketch plan level. The first is the green piece, and P-I-E-C. So the idea is that this is somehow scaled appropriately for an urban context, and my guess is it is, it's probably fine. And as you said, it's about design and making it work within the context. But I think, for all of the purposes of discussion and, you know, explanation and all those things, I think, as good as that little vignette is of the different examples of urban parks, I think two or three real-world examples would be helpful for everybody who's looking in on this. So it might be that you do pull out the shot of Crown Farm, you might pull out the shot of Spectrum, you might pull out a shot of, drawing a blank, but there's two or three other good examples around where it's predominantly green, but it's within an urban, it's walled in a very urban context. And then, and then I think it's a more comforting idea that that's, that can be that size or that shape and work, work in a, in a space like that.
Okay.
And the piece too, I think the implication has to be that some of these, these roads or these street sections will also have green reaching down them, you know, in some form or in a linear fashion, whether it's, it's a part of a wide sidewalk or some other, you know, variation in the street frontage of the buildings, it creates that, maybe, green reaches through. And I think, I think that can continue to be part of the discussion as, as an explanation for how this really plays out in the real world. On the road diagram, if you don't mind pulling that up, I, I think Main Street, this is, this is a discussion to be had, I think, moving forward, is whether or not Main Street really does get relegated to a B Street when it comes in, when it intersects Great Seneca Highway, or if we acknowledge it as, in fact, the other end of Main Street. And it's, it's an entrance into this because regardless of, regardless of the future of the CCT, whether it's installed as it's planned now or it becomes something else, or whatever those things may be, we will continue to have Great Seneca Highway as a major arterial that people need to get to from this development or get off of to get into this development. And my guess is, if done well, Main Street could actually be a lot better there than it is now for that purpose. So if A is, if A is describing frontage, maybe not a lot of storefronts, but if A is describing a strong street presence and sense of entry and sense of arrival, then to me, it's a big A.
I think, I-
So, so all I'm getting, and we don't have to solve for it, but my point is, I think the street hierarchy is a little dangerous in this discussion right now because I'm not sure we're clearing what it means, and it might be that you really just have A and B. You know, you have A that has something to do with a lot of use, you know, or heavy use, and you have a B that's not so heavy use. You know, again, in sort of a similar vein, I'm not ready to relegate the, whatever becomes the road behind Block, I'm forgetting the number, but the one that's adjacent to the, what appears to be proposed apartments on the corner, that that will be somehow a back alley, you know, that that's, I don't, I don't necessarily want to memorialize that as the, as the point or as a C Street, you know, type, type of thing.
Oh, and I think that's why it was dashed in, and again-
So, well, that's my point. Instead of dashing in, I think it's going to be a road of some kind or a street of some kind. And I think we have to say, you know, we don't want to create an alley condition where ultimately there's going to be people living in some form. So, it's just sort of a, sort of an observation. The other piece to this, and it's not going to happen now and tonight as part of this plan, but I'm just curious about the interaction or the interface to the, the site now that has Lowe's on it, because there's actually a curb cut, when you come off of Great Seneca Highway onto Main Street, so if your headlights in, right, you're coming in, immediately to your left is a curb cut that's essentially the service yard to Lowe's, right? And it's a street kind of in terms of the grid pattern, it's a street that's about probably no more than 40 feet back. So, in, in the context of trying to create circulation to the CCT, is that not appropriate coming up that side, coming up the north side too, or the, or the west side also? It's kind of an organizational thing.
Through there? Because here's Lowe's, so you're talking about, there, there's, I'm envisioning because I can't actually picture it.
It's right there.
Right there. But remember, the station, while this is showing it for three, the station area basically begins here and goes on.
Right, but just, here's the scenario in my head. So if you're, if you're taking an Uber to the station, if you're not walking there from, from there, or you're not driving your car and parking, is the logical thing to or you're not driving your car and parking, is the logical thing to do to come in off of Great Seneca having come up the side of the station, or is it to really come all the way back and around into it? That's all I'm sort of asking the question. I don't think it's.
You're thinking about like a drop-off scenario.
Well, if the street should continue through, if we should, if you imagine long-term, if the street that heads in behind Lowe's is in fact, you know, we complete that pattern, that's all. That's really just a question. Because at some point, that'll be redeveloped also, you know, long-term down the road.
If you go to the pink and green and blue bubble diagram, you can see the curb cut and it's really the one with the gray arrows.
And the only thing limiting it right now is the topography. There's actually retaining wall back about, I don't know, thirty or forty feet that gradually recedes, but just from a basic organization perspective, does the sketch plan need to acknowledge access to the C C T station?
I think it does.
From a primary route than?
Through the pedestrian. I, you know, I'm personally of the opinion I would not recommend connecting this through. Again, I would rather direct it to the larger roads that could handle it. And candidly, going forward, I'm of the opinion you do all this, you shouldn't need a car to get there because you're already living there, and that's the reason we're developing around the station. You know, and while we're improving the other bicycle pedestrian connections, you know, I wouldn't necessarily be of the opinion going forward, not knowing when all this is going to be implemented, to be encouraging, you know, further single occupancy vehicles. I think part of the goal of this master plan is to improve the infrastructure network for other modes.
Let's keep that as a strong, sort of a strong backdrop to what we're talking about. But I do think, looking at the street hierarchy, it's really more of a recommendation moving this forward since that's all we're really doing tonight, is that we not downplay or we become a little more clear about why we're calling these A, B, and C? If it's, you know, speed, amount of traffic, number of storefronts, width in section? And what's really being implied by that?
I think, and again, you know, maybe I breeze through it, but I think in their description, you know, the first and third bullet, it is really tied to the activated pedestrian realm next to it. Again, we're not discussing cross-sections. There's nothing to say the right-of-way for a B street will not be exactly the same, potentially as the right-of-way for an A street. It's how it's working and interacting with the buildings next to it. So, you know, I can easily envision, you know, some of these B streets, you know, having, again, the same right-of-way, having the same level of bicycle and pedestrian facilities there. It's just, it's not the interaction with the pedestrian realm for the activated uses.
I would just recommend a little bit more clarity on that when it's moving forward because in other places and other times, an A, B, and C street has to do with the section, the street section.
And again, that was sort of the conundrum we had with staff with the applicant that were just not there and understanding that in S D P, we're gonna have a road code to judge against. We're gonna have design guidelines submitted that's actually going to lay out the cross-sections.
I get it, but just as this moves forward, if you start talking about it in those terms and we're not really talking about anything but maybe pedestrian activity or something else, it's a little misleading, that's all. I understand where the frontage is and it makes a lot of sense.
I mean, I think it's, I'm in agreement with everything that's been said. I think it's a great plan at a sketch level. But I want to respond to something, Rob, that you just said that I think is pretty much my only concern, is that making sure that we do accommodate single occupancy vehicle or car traffic from off-site and making sure that the traffic planning, the flow around the site recognizes that a ton of people, if this is successful, are gonna be coming from the surrounding community and they're not gonna be coming on the C C T, and they're not gonna be Uber-ing, and they're not gonna be coming in van pools, they're gonna be driving their cars there like they do now. So the idea that, you know, well, we should just, you know, if this is successful, everybody will live there doesn't quite.
I was being somewhat tongue-in-cheek as it relates to the C C T use. Again, the thirty percent design plans right now show the parking garage for that is the Kettlin's Apartments. So, you know, I don't want to lose sight of that issue. So, you know, but I think even it was acknowledged during the public hearing, I think we're all hoping for something that's very successful and will be drawing. And obviously, as was stated in the applicant's response letter, you know, they're fully prepared. We will be doing A P F O at the time of S D P, so. Everything will be looking, and we will look at garages just as we did with Crown, that the garages, if it's a residential building, that there's additional parking to facilitate the other stuff.
But at the sketch plan level, it's more about the description and the introduction of a sketch plan that says, this is viable even without the C C T. And the way that happens is you allow people to drive on the site and enjoy it and, you know, do all those things they need to do. I mean, it just has to be implied in the plan that that's okay.
And I guess my main concern is that if you go to the site at any of the peak times in current condition, traffic throughout this parking lot and accessing it isn't necessarily pleasant. You know, I don't think it, I don't think it's, I have zero metrics other than personal experience.
We do have to move the snow blowers off the sidewalk in front of Lowe's.
But, you know, coming in off of Lowe's, hitting intersections, you know, as a pedestrian having walked it and as a driver having driven it, neither one of those experiences, especially in this area, is particularly pleasant. So if we're successful, we're gonna add a whole lot more draw for people to come, and that's gonna mean a whole lot more traffic. So I think, again, I get that these are probably much more questions and issues to be discussed down the line, but figuring out how to get people from around the area onto the site efficiently, I think, is a big concern of mine. But other than that, I think it's a great plan.
I concur, and obviously, that will be one of the things front and center on our radar when the S D P comes in. If it comes at a certain time, it may be autonomous vehicles, so it'll be good ones, so who knows?
Rob, one other pie in the sky issue that hasn't been broached, and that is the possibility of a bridge across Great Seneca?
That has been resolved, and that was something that was brought up. We have the annexation agreement with Metamune. And again, the discussion is twenty twenty-three, we have to begin work. Metamune made very clear that they have no interest in a bridge ending in their campus. Further, staff had discussed, our goal is, this is a regional area and to better serve the Quinns Orchard Park community, especially given the reality that we own property right on Orchard Ridge and Great Seneca, that that makes sense for the logical landing because that would then take the pedestrians and serve Metamune from Quinns Orchard Park and dump them right on Quinns Orchard Boulevard so they can go right into Saul's or left into there. This was vetted through M T A, this was brought up to the city, the area advisory committees for discussion. And again, the state's position is the same as Metamune's and the same as staff. The goal of any pedestrian bridge, just because you have a station, if it goes to nowhere and basically dumps you on a sidewalk on the other side of Great Seneca Highway and you have to walk tons, it's really not serving the purpose. So it makes sense from a regional context to do something that can link this whole other community. As you may be aware, you know, this year in the budget year, we are completing that last link on the NIST bicycle path. So then that path's gonna be there to be able to link West Riding, all of those, through a pedestrian thing down into this site.
Well, that's an important discussion to include in this. I think that's an important discussion to include as we talk about this going forward.
So, you know, staff, myself, is of the opinion, you know, basically, the bridge stuff has been resolved both at the city level, at the state level, and at the stakeholder level.
Where do we go next? We doing from the public?
No, the record is closed.
That's our recommendation, all right? Should read the agenda. All right, any other questions, concerns, discussion?
Not at this point.
Not now, later.
I'm sure.
Later as an after the recommendation, next phase? All right, very good. So, yeah, great start. Rob, hands up in the audience there. Look behind you. Can you clarify? Well, here's our issue. Our record's closed. Council record is still open?
Till the twenty-sixth.
Right.
So discuss with staff your concerns, and we can get it on the council's record before they close it? And I'm sure Rob will be around right after the meeting to do that. Is that fair?
We've recommended, this is Marina, she represents D P Z, and they've been working with the roundtable with Rosali's group, and we, at the last roundtable meeting, had recommended, you know, if you have comments, you know, please submit them in writing. So it's definitely in the council's record that the planning commission record had closed.
Okay. So, well, Rob, she's got a question, can you?
I do have a question, which is that.
Last staff, because we can't really do anything tonight.
We have a question on process. We are very supportive of this idea, that the documents I saw were uploaded on May fifth, which was the day of the closing, giving the public no time to comment on the submission.
That, it was loaded on May fifth, there's twenty-one days until the record closes. Again, the planning commission's just making a recommendation, they're not the approving authority. So you have three weeks to issue comments to the council, to the actual approving body prior to their policy discussion, prior to their record closing.
And we still, we don't have a chance to give planning commission our comments?
The chance is closed.
There was thirty days between the public hearing and their record closing, so everything has been posted, the record has been available to the public. The public hearing was there. You know, as I said, the issues that were raised, that the applicant has responded to, were brought up at the public hearing.
I understand that, but new documents or revised documents were uploaded the day of the closing?
Because that was the day I received them. They had no obligation to submit their revised stuff prior to the record closing, I mean, days before the record closing.
Let me take this over. If we were in the position of actually authorizing the approval of the plan and moving it forward, I would see your concern, and I think I would ask staff what are courseless options to open the record or something. However, we're not acting as, in any authority today, except to offer a recommendation based on our perspective. So there is still plenty of time and plenty of opportunity to either discuss with staff your concerns, who they can then forward on to the council, or do it in a formal written way or both. And I think that's probably the most advantageous thing for you anyway because in three minutes tonight, I'm not sure you could get all those points across anyway. And we're at a point where we need to move on to our recommendation. But I appreciate your concern or your diligence in looking at the record. And as I said, I think Rob will be around after the meeting, so you can make some time to either connect up at a follow-up meeting or wherever it was necessary. Is that fair? Okay, thank you. All right, so it's fairly straightforward from our perspective. I think staff was, maybe you need to say what you're recommending.
Again, on the screen was the recommendation we made, and again, you know, again, sketch approvals are guided by this section of the code, so the complete findings were listed in the staff analysis.
So I think, I don't know where it belongs in the record or where it belongs in the recommendation. I do wanna, I wanna make a point of what we talked about tonight, what we've had in our discussion about maybe a little too much specificity at this point on the road hierarchies to allow for, you know, whatever's appropriate for Main Street. But what I'm also getting in your feedback from that remark or from that discussion is that it's not really vesting any authority on the road hierarchy anyway or on the design. So take it as you want, but I do want there to be some.
What we have done in similar situations in the past with sketch plans is the main topics that the planning commission would, that in the course of their discussion brought up for, to make sure it's, you know, on thought at the next stage at S D P we can do. So if the concern essentially is, you know, a further refinement of the road hierarchy network is expected at S D P level, I can put that. If a better understanding of accommodation, of parking, you know, for a successful center, make sure that gets integrated into any S D P going forward. A better discussion potentially. I mean, they can do the further exhibits for the council, real-world examples of the green, but again, if sort of the planning commission's discussion was, you know, that again, there are other tools, and we've had successful tools outside of lawn panels to do that, but we're looking to see really that more fleshed out under the design guidelines.
So I think our recommendation is to put the proposal in context with urban parks that we know and have experienced and have gone through the planning process. It's gonna help everybody involved. It's not that big a deal, just, you know, compare it to pick five, you know, two came up tonight, but whatever they are.
And they can do that as an example, and I'll put that in the discussion, from the planning commission discussion, and that adds a recommendation on the sketch.
The road hierarchy itself, let's make clear what is being proposed has more to do with pedestrian activity than it does vehicular activity. And we acknowledge that moving forward, vehicular activity has to be part of that equation, and it just isn't yet. And I want that to be clear in our report. So whether that's movement on the site or collecting the cars once they're there, those are two different issues, but it's all about traffic and not pedestrian activity. And that's all, as long as we're clear about that and how our recommendation is moving forward. Was there anything else? I think those are the two big points. So with that, and that'll just be in the record as commentary or as introductory, I guess.
As you've seen before with some of the C P Cs, we began with just a paragraph talking about what the discussion was.
Sounds good. So with that, as our recommendation, please, our motion for recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, upon the findings presented herein in the evidence of the record, recommend approval of S K seven five oh three dash two thousand seventeen to the mayor and city council.
Second. So move to the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pass the exam see. Thanks very much, good luck. Let's see the next phase as soon as it's viable, right? All right, ordinarily, we would have on the next segment of the agenda, site plans, but we have none tonight. So that takes us to from the commission. Phil, may I start with you?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay.
I just want to follow up with the chairman as well as staff regarding Kettlin's Boulevard and pedestrians, problems that we've, pedestrian crossings, if you will, to make Kettlin's Boulevard a little more allowable for pedestrians to walk across. There was some discussion, some point that we're gonna have some meetings and like to follow with staff.
We've been talking about having a meeting of some of the planning commissioners with the transportation committee out on site to walk that. Possibly the date would be the same date as their next meeting, which is June twentieth.
June twentieth?
Yeah.
And what's the purpose of that walking, though? I mean, what do we really, I mean, we think we know there's a problem, but what's?
I think it's to point out the problems that are perceived by people to the director or to Ollie Mumpower.
Problems as well as possible recommendations to improve the situation, or is it just?
Yeah, I mean, we, remember, we are going to contract to have someone look at all the, look at all the roundabouts in Gaithersburg to make recommendations for better pedestrian and also vehicular.
We're not just talking about roundabouts, though, we're talking about the entire strip crossing over, whether it be by Whole Foods or further down by Giuseppe's, if you will. That whole stretch of Kettlin's Boulevard has been under question as to safety.
If I could interject, we, Rosali and I have been working together and also the Kettlin's Downtown Roundtable, which Rosali has really been spearheading through her role as the chairman of the Kettlin's Community Foundation. And I had a report on that tonight as well. But just to interject on the Kettlin's Boulevard issue, at the recommendation of Rosali and Mike Watkins and D P Z, actually, there is a transportation planner named Rick Hall, who the foundation has actually reached out to to be the next speaker in the speaker series, which is scheduled now for June fourteenth.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, yes, okay. It hasn't been finalized, and I'm still working with Ollie Mumpower on this idea, but Rick may be able to come a little early for that lecture and spend between eight and twelve hours with us and Ollie and potentially members of the transportation committee and members of the planning commission looking at Kettlin's Boulevard. And he is, as I understand it, and what I've seen from his website and my discussions with him, he is a preeminent transportation planner of new urbanist communities. And so we think he might be a very good choice to do a very limited exercise for now, but maybe more later.
And the resource of that, of that potential work will be the presentation, the scope of the presentation of the lecture. So he will be speaking of the concept called complete street that, you know, for a while, for the longest time, he was explaining to me that the transportation engineering profession has been dealing with everything within the right-of-way. But it's actually taking into consideration what happens beyond that point and how that affects the flow. And so he will be taking a very comprehensive look at it and providing those recommendations both to the city and to the community at the lecture.
So here's the thing, so when might that happen? What is?
June thirteen.
Potentially, yes, really.
That's the lecture or the visit to the site?
Both the visit and the lecture. So he would be, the potential is for him to be working with the city on the twelfth and the thirteenth. There's talk about either both or one of those days, and then the lecture on June thirteenth from seven thirty to nine at the Arts Bar.
Good. Well, all right, so here's the thing. Tactically, this is a problem that exists at a smaller scale than maybe a full street. Well, I mean, I don't disagree that a good comprehensive look at the nature and behavior of all that's going on in Kettlin's Boulevard could be very valuable. But what's been raised kind of time and time again, I mean, you go back through, actually, it's interesting, the Town Courier is a bit of a, an archive for this issue because about every two years, there's either a study or a pedestrian awareness campaign by the police about this very issue and in those very intersections. And it's sort of a recurring theme. So if we think that's the ultimate way to solve for it and there's no, you know, there's no other incremental way to get there or there's no other things we can be doing, my fear now is that there's enough people aware of and concerned about it kind of in their own daily use of the intersections, just, you know, coming and going from the shopping center and, you know, average use, that we should be vocal about, we should be very clear that something is happening or is going to happen and what the scope of it is, and that it has the potential of some short and near-term solutions. You know, I think one of the problems with talking about a well-renowned planner and a big study is that it can come off looking like, well, that's great, but that's gonna take some time to implement. You know, what else are we, what other wheels are turning that would give us some incremental changes or incremental improvements and the opportunity for those incremental improvements? Because I think, one way they're setting in, I think people are getting more and more sensitive to the fact that there's, you know, they're dodging cars at these crosswalks. And, you know, there just is apparently no movement on it. So that's, my fear is that there needs to be that piece to it somehow, and I don't know if that can come out of Ollie's office in a more.
Well, there is a second step to this, and maybe, Rob, you wanna?
Well, I think the driving force behind this was to look at best practices because we're very much aware at the point in time those were designed, that was the standard, but that standard really didn't take into account accessibility issues, things along that. So as part of the scope of this study, angles of deflection are angles of deflection. It's really, how are you getting people across? Are the median breaks or the pedestrian refuge is correct? Because obviously, you don't have the signalized intersection where you can have a countdown timer to get somebody across. So that's really the focus. And while the bulk, you know, we're also looking at Washingtonian, you know, Washingtonian Boulevard.
Boulevard.
True.
We have a similar situation, I think, believe it's up near.
Perry Parkway.
Perry Parkway. So it's looking at all that, really from the complete streets aspect. I mean, we know we're moving vehicles. I mean, the, the traffic circles work great for that. It, it's really how are you getting people a, across in these centers? Did we set the, the, the walks too close to them? You know, is there enough time, reaction time? Is the width now of the right of way enough to get somebody in a wheelchair or on crutches across that street? So that's really the focus.
Or is the light even bright enough to see him when it's, when it's not middle of the day, right?
Yeah, so that, that's really a lot of the focus. So it's really in a cert-
So how are you answering that question? So you're saying there's a second step or is there something?
Yeah, as far as doing some sort of capital improvements as far as changing.
Okay.
So.
Can, can we?
And we talked about this a few months ago, right before the budget, so.
Yeah. And months before that. Town Courier has all the tickets.
Well, no, no, we had, I mean.
I'm, I'm being busy, I'm sorry, but yeah.
But Ollie had, had set those two steps in motion because now with our CIPs, in order to get funding, you have to do a lot of pre-work.
No, I understand. Maybe, I'm sort of feeling around here for, for some more discussion about it, but is it a communication thing, too? Maybe it's, maybe it's a little bit of.
Well, that, that should probably be, I mean, you may recall that when we first put in a roundabout, we had a video on, on the city's channel telling people how to drive in a roundabout.
And, and of course, obviously, the outcome of this study, I mean, I can tell you right now, the, the study hasn't even gone out to bid yet, but, but the outcome of the study, I'm sure is gonna involve public process. You know, we normally now, we're not doing these comprehensive studies without bringing it before, you know, if, if not solely to the council, the council and the planning commission. And obviously, stuff like this does get vetted through the transportation committee also. It's just not at the starting end, you know, we still have to write out the scope, get everybody there and get the work done. Because that's really gonna drive budgetary wise, what is gonna get support for a CIP project, you know.
I want to be more specific in the, in the sense that what I brought up four months ago was the fact that in the evening, it is very, as, as the chairman mentioned, it's dark, there's no lighting. Now, that's an immediate problem. Now, if the, if the study comes out in the middle of the day, study comes out in the summertime, it's not dark enough. It's gonna be nine o'clock before it gets dark enough, but in the wintertime, it's dark by five o'clock. And that's when that, that becomes a major problem.
Well, you can make sure that's included in the scope, that, that observational stuff is done both during the day and at night. That's, that's not an issue.
Let me give, I mean, too, if I could just add on to that, because I was gonna bring it up in my, my little thing, but man, I, I was there just a few days ago and I was just at the crosswalk near where, just before you get to the Giuseppe's, well, near the, I guess the, what's that, the Panera there?
Yeah.
One of them. Well, anyway, like the crosswalk has just faded. I mean, just stuff like that where, you know, and maybe we could just have some iridescent, you know, striping or something and, but the lighting is, is a huge issue, I mean.
I think, I think it's a design issue because, you know, I, I cross that with my kids, you know, constantly and, and the cars see you standing or actually don't see you standing. So even in the, in the middle of the day, it's, it's a factor. Like, you know, we're standing in the median, we're trying to figure out if we can make eye contact with the driver to, to get over. But I think, you know, to everyone's point, we're just trying to get the ball rolling. And I think that, you know, we have been working with staff to ensure that, because we know that there's already something in the works that can inform that process. And you guys can speak more to this, but I believe that the Boulevard is also up for maintenance. And so if there was to be some recommendations, please correct me if I'm wrong, this is the right time to, no?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Well, what they're talking about is the capital improvement funds that have been approved for next year.
Okay, so.
Or will be.
And another thing I don't wanna do is make this all about Kettlelands Boulevard because we have a lot of pedestrian crosswalks. And I think whatever we learn from this, it, it needs to be kind of a citywide attitude and, and.
And that, that's the purpose of the study. That's why it's not limited to Kettlelands Boulevard.
So that's why, that's great, let's do the study, let's get all that great information out there. However, it doesn't solve the problem. And it may not for years. And that's, that's what's really discouraging right now, is that if you, if you think about this in terms of a holistic look at the design of the Boulevard and the, the impact of intersecting pedestrians and circles and cars and, you know, all manner of things happening, yeah, we gotta get to that, no question. But we're also looking at some very real world degradation of the crosswalk right now and the lighting levels and the rudimentary, the rudimentary things that we all know, if we were building the road new, we would insist we're up, would be up to a certain level. There'd be foot candles on the sidewalk, there'd be, there'd be contrast in the, in the paving section, there'd be all these things. Those aren't there now because even the warnware, they weren't part of the original design. So even at that level, there has to be some sense that, I mean, you know what it's like when someone paints a new line down the road? All of a sudden, you notice it.
Right, right.
Things kind of straighten up.
Exactly.
It's, it's, you know, it's, what's missing in this conversation is where's that step? And that, that's all I'm getting at, is if there's, if there's some of those things that Ollie's team can bring to the table sooner rather than later, not, I'm not, not discounting at all the fact that there's a larger issue at play. We've gotta get that rolling one way or the other, because I'm, I'm definitely afraid of that, that intersection and others, that there's, there, there's too many close calls that, that, you know, we can't wait for it to actually happen.
I mean, I know, you haven't called it on me yet, but, but we're talking about this and I had that on my list. And just what you were saying, I mean, it's like a little dip in the road and, and, you know, people can't see you if you're there. So, so really, that is, that is urgent. I, I really think it is. But, but I also looked at the Rio and I, I noticed that folks, there's roundabouts there, but folks are crossing in the center of the island and not near the, you know, the real crosswalks. So that's a problem. So I don't know, we need to do a campaign in the city about, like, using crosswalks properly? I mean, 'cause that's dangerous, too. So, I mean, there's, there's, there's a really big issue here with, with pedestrian safety as it relates to crossing into these, you know, these centers where you're gonna go shop and eat and whatever.
But, but I mean, I think, from what I'm hearing, I think the key point is sort of separating the long-term, big-study redesign tasks from what's, what in essence is, sounds like maintenance task. Repeat the lines, break lights and light, but like, stuff that should be able to be done under a maintenance level.
Right.
Spit and polish.
Well, I think, you know, that's a lot of forethought and I'm gonna recommend that Rick watch this, Rick Hall, the consultant, will be coming.
Oh, oh, okay. But, I mean, but, I mean, to your point, you know, right at that, right at that Boulevard, I mean, it's faded, the, the crosswalk has faded. You know, we could, that's something we could look at immediately, you know, and I know, I mean, that's a capital issue, there's, that's a money thing.
But every year, there's a budget line item for restriking things like that. So I mean, obviously, Trudy and I can bring this to attention.
They're working through that, I get it, yeah. Again, there are base standards that those, those intersections don't even fulfill right now for crosswalks. So it's, we've, we've gotta attack that stuff first and, and move it along. And, and at the same time, I do think it's time to amp up, and I don't know who, how we get this word back and how we put it on someone's list of recommendations, amp up a little bit on the education side, communication side about being careful for both sides or the fact that we're looking at it. I think, I think it's worthy that you let everybody know that this is on the horizon if they wanna.
Well, is this something that we could, as a commission, you know, get a letter and send it to the mayor and council as an issue? I mean, that's what we're supposed to do.
I'm hoping the staff will tell them in the next 24 hours.
But I'm just saying, but maybe it's, maybe it's a stronger point if we do do some sort of.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I would, I would consider that. I would like to do something like that.
Can, well, can staff at least, do you, do, tell us where this belongs in the, in the broad range of priorities that I know are just, your, your list is long and it's dense right now.
Yeah. But, I mean, I, I, pedestrian safety, crosswalk safety is just a, a really hot button for me and I know it is for my good friend Lloyd and, and others, but we always, we always seem to bring it up. And it's just a, it's just a thing waiting to happen.
The, the three-step approach, so there's immediate stuff that can be done. Now, that candidly DPW may not be aware of, so Trudy and I can bring that to the attention of Ollie, because we do have every year, you know, broad budget line items, you know, about restriking things like that. So if you guys have identified already that these are issues, we can bring that. We need to get this study done to make sure we're doing best practices, because there's no sense, you know, dumping good money after bad. If we've designed something that does not function now and does not meet the current best design standards, Danny, to your point, you know, people shouldn't be walking through the middle of the circle. But, but it's just like when you see 355, why do people cross mid-block and not use crosswalks? Because it's, they're, they're finding that. So how do you create the environment, sort of the complete streets vision zero ethic that you're creating something that even the drivers are aware of how it's supposed to function as well as the pedestrians? So that's the purpose of the study. That then can lead to a specific CIP, in the next five-year CIP. Then we're talking about the longer range, what is the grand future of Kettlelands Boulevard, which I think is a much broader discussion on a number of fronts. Remember, at one point, we had talked about realigning it so it came in 90 degrees with Great Seneca Highway. Remember, essentially, state highway poo-pooed that. So that's why it has even that weird angle, which I don't like, it doesn't make sense. That and Orchard Ridge should be a standard 90-degree four-leg, but that's not going to happen. So, you know, what are the other things we can do? Or at least, that's not gonna happen in the near term that we can envision. So, you know, the, these are all the issues. And again, we all have, have to remember, we are a pay-as-you-go cities, so stuff takes time. But some of these, the immediate safety issues, I think, may just be because people aren't aware. If you drive over something every day, I mean, I, you know, drive the same route every day, I can't tell you whether or not some of the lanes are fading or not. You know, it just doesn't click because you get used to doing.
Yeah, the question is, is in, in a crosswalk situation, if we were building it today, what would we insist in terms of contrast, brightness, all of the things that make a difference for?
And I think that's what's gonna come out of this best practices thing, as it relates, because it is a unique situation with traffic circles, because it is free-flow movement. You know, you, even with angles of deflection, you're not coming to a complete stop. You don't have the flashing where you know you have 25 seconds to get across, so.
Because it's such a hot button item for me, I'll slow down and certain people in the car, cool shell, and the English say, "Why are you stopping?"
Okay, so good. So we've got, I think, a way to get after this, at least at an incremental level and then a longer-term thing. And I, and again, I'd recommend we get, get the word out that this is happening, you know? Reassure people that there is, the study's emerging, there's some short-term things we can do.
As soon as we are in doubt, I, I told John, I'm ready to put in a flyer in every paper.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
You know, you actually, you had the longest, you had the longest agenda.
You always start and dust this work.
Danny, you did the next?
Yes, I do and, and my good friend stole my thunder there, but thank you so much 'cause it's so important. But, and this, this kind of, you know, leads into the same thing or, or dovetails, I guess. But is there, what is, what is the street resurfacing schedule? How is that done in the city? Is it a 25-year kind of thing?
I'm not completely up to speed, but I can tell you basically some of the stuff that's going on. Remember, we received budget for new asphalt, essentially asset management software.
Uh-huh.
So to begin looking and then we wanna sort of follow other municipalities.
So it can be tracked?
Yes, so then it becomes sort of a priority function, so the money's budget, 'cause obviously you can't pave the entire city in one year.
Oh, sure.
So you have to target. So it's just, I believe Trudy might be able to help me a year ago that they got, you know, the, the asset management stuff. So they're going through that, so they do, they begin to project plan and go, all right, here's the stuff we have to attack this fiscal year and they budget for that. So Ollie should have listed, when you read the adopted budget in July, you'll see a line under for that, but, but it should have listed sort of what the roads, what roads are, are the target. County does the same thing, you know, when they do basically replacing the sidewalks and they target specific areas, so.
And sometimes it's more, much more than 25 years.
Okay, okay. The other thing is.
Well, it really depends on the condition of the road.
Absolutely.
I know one of the contracts that I drafted and I believe has been put in place is a much more detailed assessment of the road. It's not just, many places do go by year.
Right.
Well, it's been 20 years, 25 years, whereas this will actually involve a study of the condition of the surface and underneath, underneath the surface of that road.
Okay.
So that, I think that's part of what you're talking about, too.
Okay, so, and number three, traffic coming measures and cul-de-sacs, 'cause some of my neighbors have stopped me and they, and I guess there's a new daycare in our neighborhood and some of the parents, you know, come tearing through there. And, and they, you know, asked me, you know, what, what, what can we do about it? And I can follow up later, but is there some, I mean, you know, I, I know people don't like humps, but is there something that can be done like that? Or is it maybe just to have, you know, Officer Friendly sit there in his car for a couple days or something like that?
I think you'd need to call Ollie about that.
Okay, I will.
Public works and I'm very upset, so.
Oh, oh, and I have to say.
Don't you have?
One more thing.
Isn't there one more thing?
There's one more thing.
One more thing.
Stole your thunder.
Yeah, right, it's like, you know, the lovely Gaiters Book Festival is, it's Saturday.
You're a committee member.
I'm a committee member, so.
There's some good reading to be had.
Good reading.
The study that reads.
And, and the schedule is out.
I think, you know, I was going to speak to the lecture, I think we've already done that, so I think John's going to talk about the roundtable, so I'll pee back on whatever.
Okay.
Okay, so, John, take it away.
Okay, I had a few items tonight. I wanted to report that six of us, there was a contingent of six of us that went to the American Planning Association Conference in New York City last week and last weekend. It was Planning Commissioner, or Planning Division Chief Trudy Schwartz, planners Greg Mann, Kirk Eby and Jasmine Forbes and, of course, your own Commissioner Matt Hopkins.
That's where he is, still there?
Still there.
He may still be there. Actually, he went to ULI, CNU and APA.
How did he manage that?
I don't know.
He's recovering.
But it was a great conference. It was actually amazingly uplifting and optimistic, I found that, and I think most of us who were there found it as, as well. This, the central themes included the current era of American reinvention, impacts of globalization, the rising importance of the millennials, which we were kind of tired of hearing about, but, but it's important, we all know that, yes, Rusally.
Yep.
And the, and a really interesting common theme was the impact of autonomous vehicles on the future of planning, which is, you know, happening very fast and it's, it's gonna be difficult to catch up with, but.
Sorry, Trudy, I heard a quote that it's not a planning meeting unless they bring, and the autonomous car come on.
Or millennials.
Or millennials.
So we crossed it.
So, anyway, we greatly appreciate the support of the mayor and council, the city manager's office and the commission for supporting the investment in our planners. It's very important to us. I'm also very happy to report that the planning division is now fully staffed and fully remodeled. We actually had our.
Which is, the building was actually remodeled.
The planning division is actually remodeled.
Oh, a little touch up to that.
The planning division space.
We didn't know whether you were remodding.
That's why I'm here to help.
Thank you, Frank. We actually had our first meetings today in our new dedicated conference room. Of course, it's not dedicated to the planning division, but it's dedicated to planning and code. So we're very excited about that. And it was practically fully booked today. So it gives you an example of how needed that conference room was.
So for the public, the nucleus of the planning department still is where it has been in the public entrance and access for services and all still stays where it was?
Yeah. There are a couple more phases to the remodel. The planning division itself has been remodeled, but there are, the rest of the department will be remodeled over the next couple of years, which includes the lobby and the front desk. That will be completely remodeled at some point within the next couple of years. Finally, I did want to mention the Kentlands Downtown Roundtable, which, as, as you know, at the joint work session for Kentlands Apartments roughly a month or six weeks ago, there was direction from the mayor and council and the planning commission that we really need to look at the three applications or the three plans for Kentlands in a cohesive and coordinated way. Of course, those three plans are at three very different stages. Kentlands Apartments is seeking an SDP. Saul just got your recommendation for a sketch plan. And Kimco has just filed for a amendment to final plan, which of course will only go to you and not to the mayor and council. They, they do plan to follow that up with a sketch plan for the future redevelopment of Kentlands Market Square. So that will be on the heels of that. But the Kentlands Downtown Roundtable really came out of this, and it was really led by Bruce Alley as chairman of the Kentlands Community Foundation. It has the support of the Kentland Citizens Assembly and the Lakelands Community Association. As I said, the goal is a cohesive and coordinated downtown. And the second meeting of that roundtable was held last week and it was attended by all three applicants, Saul, Kimco, and Kentlands Apartments, two representatives from Medimmune, both the KCA and the LCA were represented, and four members of city staff. So just reporting that there is a major effort going on to make sure we look holistically at the plans for Kentlands.
So characterize that organization. Is that, is that something that's constituted formally or is it, is it an ad hoc group that's getting together? How, how is it?
It's not constituted formally by the city. I'll, I'll let Bruce Alley explain how it's been organized.
Well, under the Kentland Community Foundation, we have created the downtown initiative and the goal is to promote cohesiveness. And it's been a volunteer partnership. You know, at that, basically, the group has met two times. The first meeting was initially designed to talk about architectural cohesiveness, but then a couple of planning factors came to be, and the group requested that a closer look would be taken. So those issues would be addressed primarily, I wouldn't say major issues, I think Rob spoke to that about some of the factors of the master plan being outdated. And so, because of that, us, the foundation reached out to DPC and Mike Watkins, and they, on April 11th, took a comprehensive look at the overall master plan. And now, the applicants submitted their private information to them and that wasn't shared with anyone until May 11th, when we made the commitment to present everything to them. And so they were, it was a, I guess, a collective approach to how, how to look at the downtown in a comprehensive holistic way as it stands today. And I don't know, Marina's here, she can probably speak a little bit more to that. But the, the foundation's role is primarily and solely to facilitate the communication, not to take any opposition. So I do not represent anyone's interests at this time.
Well, can I ask a quick question? Because of all those different organizations who have different agendas, I guess, for lack of a better term, but is there a good collaboration and, and kind of partnership of working together? Because what I'm saying is that people are not just coming in to just make sure that they get what they want. I mean, is it, is it true collaboration among the, the different organizations?
That's the goal.
That's the goal.
Well, yeah, but is it happening? Oh, okay.
It's just going to tell. It's just going to tell. Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's a complex issue. We've got three plans at three different levels. And yes, everybody's looking out for their own interests and that's a lot.
I think this is fantastic. There's an advocacy arm in the community right now that's willing to draw these three disparate groups together with a sort of larger goal. I think it's fantastic. And Sally, that's, that's good news. Is it open to the public? If neighbors are interested in this roundtable discussion, are they, are they permitted or invited? Or is it more of a working session among the stakeholders at this point?
At the, at the initial stage, on May 11th, it was a stakeholder. They willingly provided their information. So we wanted to make sure that we provided them the first hand, the first opportunity to comment. And so subsequently, we will be incorporating the comments of the, of the different partners, I should say, of the, of this roundtable. And they will be public comment, a public involvement, because that's ultimately the goal for, because, you know, again, the foundation stands as a facilitator, not in any position. However, the goal is to involve the community because our mission is to promote minor urbanism. So ultimately, the goal will be to engage the community.
Because you're hearing conversation even tonight about the sketch plan, that that integration piece is still a very strong undertow and what's driving some of our conversations. So, you know, the sooner there's some indication that there is a collaborative kind of solution about all this, the better probably in some sense of what it is or what it looks like is.
Absolutely. And once we work with the community, our goal will be to present it to different elected officials.
How's it pacing? What do you think? Like a couple of months, a couple of years?
I think within the next two months.
Really? Okay, wow, that's ambitious.
Two, three months, let's say.
I would just like to add my thanks to both DPZ and Marina in particular, and Mike Watkins and his office for the tremendous amount of pro bono time that they have spent looking at, looking at our master plan and looking at the three individual submissions. And, and, you know, their investment in the community is very much appreciated.
And that's no small puzzle to take on. So, yeah, thank you. That's, that's a piece of work. Great.
And I mean, and Rick Hall's for coming up, actually strong out of that because we, that's one of the expertise that was recommended, a consultant with an expert, expertise on that field. We'll look at it.
Great. All right. Fantastic. Anything else? That's plenty.
Well, actually, there's a little bit more.
Okay.
You know, I, part of this, the whole foundation downtown initiative, it's to take a closer look at Main Street. And so as part of this whole aspect of looking at our downtown, the foundation is taking a very engaged role into looking for long-term solutions for Main Street. And so I, I would say that one is going to take a little bit longer to develop. But we have, we're doing a lot, a lot of research and we're learning a lot of great information that we think is going to provide a solid, long-term solution for the divot ownerships, the, and all the different elements that seem to be plaguing our Main Street, specifically to the live works.
Great. All right. That's good news. Thanks for looking up.
If I could just go back to my item number two about the planning staff for just a moment. Have you had the opportunity to meet all of our new planners?
Some have.
Seems like most.
There are two new planners here tonight.
Yeah, but I recognize the one that has bow tie.
Well, for the sake of redundancy, Laura Howell, who is on our long-range planning team with Rob Robinson, and Ray Roaks, who's on our community planning team with Greg Mann.
Welcome again.
That's great.
Although we chatted a few weeks ago.
Thanks for your dedication. Appreciate it.
All right. John, is that it for?
That's it for me.
Great. Thank you very much. Rob?
So, it's been three months. Trudy reminded me. Time for a master plan update. So where we sit, again, no traction on Parks and Rec. Obviously, this is a busy time for them, but we're making good progress on the historic preservation element. I am assuming it is very likely this summer, maybe your August meeting, we do the pre-formal 60-day advertisement work session with, with the planning commission to get, you know, first bite, last changes before we put it out for 60-day advert, the formal, you know.
Preservation.
Yeah, this is the preservation element. On ancillary things, as we've talked about in the past, we do have some big news. It appears as if we are rapidly trying before July 1st to piggyback on Prince George's County's contract to work with Weinhardt and Tool to redo our road code. They did a fabulous job for them. So we have some money that we have to use or lose. So we saw this contract. So Melissa Roth, our new transportation planner, myself and Ollie are working very hard to get the scope, get all that done. We're getting a bunch of documents in today so we can start moving towards that. Speaking of Alyssa, I'll be happy to send it on because the topic's been sort of brought up. She's completed her first white paper. One is on Vision Zero because that's of interest. And then she's wrapping up her one on Complete Streets. So I'll be happy to forward that on to the planning commission. So people get a better understanding. There's a lot of misconceptions about both of what these mean. They're both sort of buzzwords. So she's done a very great job talking about what the fundamental theories are, the various ways they can be implemented, what other places do, and the pluses and minuses for integrating them within the city of Gateford, in particular with our road code.
Is it an internal document or is that for?
Yeah, right now it's, it's internal. But we'll be happy to share it with the transportation committee. You know, we can always put it up there. So we want to get that done as part of the road code thing so people understand what we're doing. Lastly, we're hoping, as you may be aware, this fiscal year, we have to complete the CD zone review. Laura and I have been working really hard and she's doing a great job. She's taken a lot of stuff, even though she wasn't here, what the commission had talked about. So we're looking at things like floating FARs, things like that to redo. So we're hoping by July to have a strategy for the public outreach component. And then lastly, tying into that also, because this all sort of impacts when we'll be able to start the transportation element, the land use element. Housing just got done, one of their work sessions. So they've gotten some guidance from the mayor and council. So we are hoping within the next month to begin internally scoping out our work group to complete the housing, to begin the housing study and complete the housing study upfront right now. We had requested money to do it at this point because of staffing and things like that. You know, we didn't get any money, but there's a lot of stuff we can do. We've been in touch with our friends with Rockville who just completed theirs. We've looked at a lot of things and we think we can do the work we made. Then if we can get it to like the 80% point, then potentially go and ask for some money to get us over that last 20%. Maybe the real drill down, you know, modeling and stuff. But a lot of the background stuff, we have a great GIS department. We have a lot of great data sources. So this will be a multi-departmental. So it'll be probably planning, housing, economic development, and neighborhood services as the work group as we divvy out the scope of what to look at. So we want to cover everything because again, as I've mentioned to you, it's really hard to do a land use element if you don't know what you're really going to recommend. I think the days of buzzwords like mixed use and everybody wants to do multifamily may not be realistic. So.
Interesting. So you're, you're hemmed in by fiscal year, right? So you're.
July 1st, everything kicks off and ends June 30th the following year. So road code, the, the traffic circle study, all of that stuff, you know, basically has to get done this fiscal year.
Yeah. Wow. Well, at least you have a full staff now to do it, right?
Yeah.
And some energetic millennials.
Hi. You may have heard that there's new state legislation concerning open meetings. So just wanted to tell you that coming this fall is going to be a training session for the planning commission and also other commissions.
I can give you some, a little bit of information on that because we, we have been, the training that's required, currently there is a training requirement, but that can be staff that works with the board or the commission. So therefore, as long as our staff are trained, there hasn't been a problem. Well, they've added to that and now said a member of the board or commission has to be designated to receive the training. And then they have to receive that training within 90 days.
Do you have to wear an orange vest to go with it?
No, we, we'll look into that. I mean, we are, we have a little money left over, you were saying, for the budget. So we'll see what we can do for the upcoming.
For the orange vest.
You get a sash that you get to wear.
It's the sergeant arms, right? You have the hat with the.
But the prohibition.
You have the epaulettes if you're designated.
The limitation would be that if you don't have somebody with the training, that if you need to go into closed session, you can't. So there's not another penalty, but that could be a very serious situation because while this commission hasn't had to.
Right.
In a long time.
It could come up. In the minute you don't think you'll need it. So to have that option, it's important. The laws that is effective is October 1st. Actually, the overall bill was effective July 1st, but this part of it has an October 1 deadline.
What's the training entail?
It's basically, there are a couple of options to do it. There is an online training through the Attorney General's website. I've gone through it. They say it takes two hours. It, that's a longer amount of time than it may take for folks who are familiar with it. But then we also want to have a regional training. We've got a lot of boards and commissions for the city. It actually has to be coordinated with MML and there's an academy on excellence with local governments, which has a whole training program that works with, between University of Maryland, MML, and also the county folks, Mako. In any event, we were able to get a, get a proposal in and a couple of things did happen. One of which was, it looks like September 12th at Casey Community Center is a tentative training for the region that will be available. So perhaps at some point in the next, between what's left for this month, June, July, we'll ask you to designate somebody and then make sure that person can attend. And it does look like September 12th may be our regional availability. Probably about two to three hours training is what we would expect. So if we aren't able to do the online, which may be another option, we'll get it taken care of one way or another.
We might want to designate more than one person.
Oh, you can designate as many, but at least one is the limit by state law. We're actually hoping that we'll have more than that because it also helps to know what the processes are.
Sure. I mean, do we have a limit on seats? Like a forsaken argument, everybody wanted to go. Was that a problem?
I believe the seating available at the Casey Center could, could impose a limit at some point, but I think it's 80 or 90 if I'm not mistaken. So I'm not anticipating that we'd have a major limitation in that regard.
Okay.
There was some limit on having trainers available too, but it looks like we're taking care of that too.
Is, is MCBA involved, Maryland Planning Commission Association?
I think this was something that got passed and there wasn't a lot of discussion about it.
Okay.
And since they're not a public entity, they may not be as aware, but I'm sure they will become aware.
I'll bring it up to them.
So that, that may be good. And certainly to encourage that assistance would be, would be helpful because this affects every municipality and every board of every municipality. So.
All right. Thanks for that. I guess, Trudy, you.
De Greg.
Okay, Greg?
Mine's quick. Just a reminder, next meeting's June 7.
Thanks for working on that for us.
It don't take so long.
So anything else? If there's not, thanks, everybody. Have a good evening. We're joined.